Good evening. Welcome to the Grand Rapids Board of Education meeting. Today is Monday, October 1st. And we will start by reciting the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, on the ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Secretary, can you please call the board?
Mr. Ross is excused this evening. Ms. Slade.
Here.
Baker.
Here.
Faub.
Here.
Geetson here. Hoskins.
Here.
O'Connor.
President.
Randalls.
President.
We have an agenda before us. I need a motion to approve the agenda.
The agenda is ready.
What? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign? Great, we have an agenda. Madam Superintendent, we will shift it over to you for celebrations.
I have a great group in front of me. Ron, are you going to introduce?
All right. Hi, Dr. Gonzalez.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Superintendent Neal, President Lanier, board members. Tonight, I would like to bring three individuals, three leaders in the Grand Rapids Public Schools, to you. Mr. Mike Pascoe, Principal at City. Come on up. Dr. Matthew Gonzalez, Assistant Principal at City High Middle. Thank you, Doctor. And Kathy Musser, Principal of Kent Hills. Is there another chair? Thank you.
There's a chair right here.
Thank you so much, Doctor.
Thank you, Dr. Gonzalez.
Last July, nine students from City High Middle had the opportunity to attend an IB Conference in Vancouver, British Columbia. When they were at the conference, they were empowered to go back to their community and do something very powerful for Grand Rapids. And so this evening, we are going to share with you what the sustainability plan is for the city of Grand Rapids and the Grand Rapids Public Schools. And I am going to get up and give my seat to some others who will explain this much more thoroughly than I ever could. Mr. Pascoe?
Good evening, board members, President Lanier, and Superintendent Neal. I just first want to start by thanking all of you for the support around City High Middle School and the IB program. I just want to say that it's truly felt and noticed, so we appreciate your work in support of us. July was a busy month for the city staff and city students. We had representation in south of the border and north of the border. I was down in South America for IB Conference of Americas. Got to bring a lot back in terms of leadership in the IB context, how the Common Core infuses with IB, as well as some of the updates in terms of the middle years and diploma program. At the same time, north of the border, we had these wonderful IB student leaders and Dr. Gonzalez and some parent volunteers to help facilitate our young people down in an IB conference, student conference, with a theme around sustainability. And that's what we're here for tonight, is to celebrate that and to also kind of discuss and present as to what their plan will be and how they are bringing their work back into the district. Doc?
Evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board, and Superintendent Neal. I'm a little low here. First of all, this is a celebration on many levels. It is wonderful that we were able to share this experience, but the true celebration is the collaboration that's about to occur between City High Middle School and Kent Hills Elementary. And so this will be explained to you by some students, and I don't want to steal any of their thunder, as it were. But this was a week-long conference at the campus of the University of British Columbia, which is known for its sustainability initiatives already. So these pictures you're seeing were part of our experience, and rather than talk you through everyone, we thought we'd show you. This is in Stanley Park in downtown Vancouver. The students were part of a group of 304 students from around the world. They were from 32 different countries, but the wonderful thing is they were all IB students. So there were a lot of commonalities in terms of curricular expectations and the amount of stress students were under in terms of the academic rigor. So they were all able to share that. They were also split up into non-school groups, into teams of 20, into what are called global action teams. And as we went through the week, we had different sessions that centered on solving different global issues. And these teams were charged with bringing part of the plan back to the community to share in what was learned and to better the understanding of sustainability. I would like to also, as Mr. Pascoe did, express my thanks to the board, to the superintendent, and also to the Weggie Foundation and Mr. Peter Weggie, without whom none of this would have been possible. So thank you.
Hi, my name is Haley Command. So at the end of the week, each global action team presented to the entire group their final project. And one final project was this sustainability survey that all 300 students of us answered together. Now, we brought this survey, or part of the survey, to this board meeting, so as we flip through each of the questions, we'd like you all to assess in your head either the district as a whole, a single school, or even just your life in general.
And we all took this survey, and we realized that all of our answers to these questions were yes, and this made us feel good about City and the work that it does with sustainability. And this was because a lot of the other schools there didn't really answer yes to all of them, only a few were yes. So this just made us feel good about City and the work that it's doing with sustainability.
Hi, I'm Mitchell Haynes. At City, we have several sustainability things that we do. One of them is we have an E Club, and our E Club is responsible for a couple of these sustainable activities that we do throughout the year. One of them is our lunch bin compost and recycling program, where we compost all of the extra food and we recycle all of the plastic that can be recycled. And another one is Earth Week, where we do sustainable activities throughout the week.
Hi, I'm Zoe Bowman. Part of what we're bringing back from our trip to Vancouver is a program that we're doing with Kent Hills Elementary School. We're setting up a bi-monthly program where we will visit their school and help two fifth grade classrooms design a sustainability project for their classroom.
We have different options that they can choose from. One of them is their class, both of their classes could do a recycling bin competition or a composting bin competition, or we were planning on doing possibly a classroom garden, where at the end of the year, we could use the produce that they make to create some sort of food to celebrate. Or we could do a environmental club.
We hope that the projects that are initiated in their classroom can become a model for other elementary schools within the district and other classrooms as well.
We're really excited about everything that we learned in the conference, and we're really excited to spread it through our community now and in the future. Thank you so much.
You guys had such great transition in your presentation. Shifting back and forth, that was awesome. Any questions, comments from the board?
I thought you enjoyed the conversation.
So much fun.
Any other questions or comments? Great. Thank you all for being here with us this evening.
Nice to have you.
Thank you. So now we're at public comment for board agenda items. I do have one card for agenda items. Do you have another? Mr. Helder, if you can come down, please. Good evening.
I heard the beep. All right, I'm ready. I wanted to talk briefly. I know this is the first reading, and I know that the intent is certainly probably to still make some changes. Overall, having read through this this afternoon, let me simply say this. I'm very pleased. For a long time, I think everyone here knows, the association's been very concerned about the lack of, or perceived lack of, an attendance policy, and the harm that that does to children, and the lowering of the bar, and the problems with not holding students accountable. For some of my members, myself included, there was even an element of what you might call soft racism involved in that. The idea that somehow some kids can't get to school. That's not true. Okay? We didn't ask them to. We didn't make it important enough for those students. And that hurts them later in life. And so I'm really happy to see that we're going to do an attendance policy. That's great. I did have a couple of concerns, notably around some of the issues that impact our current bargaining. This year, for the first time, I'm the lead spokesman for GREA in terms of bargaining at the table, and so I am prohibited from going into any kind of real detail about what's going on. But I will say this, Ron is at the table as well. He and I spoke just a few moments ago. I mentioned what was currently happening at the table with him. He agrees that it ties in and that we can fix it. So, you know, you may hear some things coming down the road here in terms of some possible tweaks that need to be done, but overall, policy looks very good, and we're very happy that we're taking this step, yet another step, to do right by this community and by our kids and for this district. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Helder. Secretary's report, do you have anything?
I do. I have two items. The first is the 2012 Caesar Chavez Hispanic Excellence Scholarship and Awards Gala is scheduled for October 18th, 2012, from 5:30 to 8:30. The 2012 gala will feature a special guest, Paul Chavez. He is the middle son of the late Caesar E. Chavez, who is spearheading the impressive growth of the Caesar Chavez Foundation, dramatically impacting the lives of farmworkers, Latinos, and working families in the Southwest. Please advise the BOE assistant no later than October 8th if you'd like a ticket. The second announcement is regarding the Grand Rapids Office of Parental Involvement. This is from Emmanuel Armstrong. You are invited to attend the parent-teacher community council kickoff on Tuesday, October 9th, at Nodos, located at 6628 Street. There'll be a punch reception at 5:30 PM and dinner at 6:00. RSVP cards are at your table. Let's see. If you, please let the BOE assistant know if you have not already responded. The deadline for registration is October 3rd.
Great, thank you. Madam Superintendent, do you have another report?
I would like to ask Ron to come up and Teresita Long, to introduce our secondary leaders to the board.
Thank you for allowing me to do this. There are so many, I think, great leaders that we have in this school district, and so many folks who are just doing whatever they can for kids every single day. And I'm so thankful for this opportunity to share the names and faces of many of my colleagues with you this evening. Many times, you may hear a name, but you don't know the face. Other times, you may know the face, but you don't know the name. So thank you for this opportunity this evening. Teresita, do you have anything to add? Didn't mean to catch off guard, I'm sorry.
No, obviously, this is a great group of people. We've spent last week going through training together, and what these people experienced last week, I'm really excited to see how they're going to put it into practice over the next year. So Ron, go ahead, please.
Okay. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to say the school, say the names, and have the folks stand in the audience. First up, from the School of Health Science, Mark Frost and Jason McGee. Mark Frost is the head principal at the School of Health Science, and Jason McGee is in a dual role at the School of Health Science and also GR Montessori as an assistant principal. Thank you. Next up, City High Middle, head principal, Michael Pascoe. Assistant principal, Dr. Matthew Gonzalez. And school improvement facilitator, Ryan Huppert. City High Middle. You can absolutely clap if you like. The next team is a team I'm very close to. It's the team I left just a few months ago, but we added some key components to the team. The principal of Creston High School, Mr. Troy Wilbon. The assistant principal of Creston High School, Mr. Dennis Branson. The dean of accountability and athletic director, Mr. Justin Walker. The dean of students, Mr. Nate Moody. And the school improvement facilitator, Ms. Pat Reagan. In the very back, in the seat that Mr. Lewis has had for many years, Mr. Rodney Lewis, head principal of Ottawa Hills High School. Ms. Lorraine Phillips, assistant principal of Ottawa Hills High School. And Mr. Marcus Harris, is he with us, Mr. Lewis? Oh, thank you, Mr. Marcus Harris, dean of students and athletic director, Ottawa Hills Next up is Union High School. Head principal of Union High School, Mr. Carl Nelson. Assistant principal, Ms. Belinda Jimenez. Assistant principal of ADC, Ms. Misty Stallworth. Is that here this evening? Brian Wildabour, athletic director and dean of accountability. Mr. Aaron Russey, dean of students. Ms. Jessica Mott, school improvement facilitator. And Ms. Halima Ismail, SIG coordinator. Union High School. Okay, our principal at Grand Rapids Montessori, pre-K-12, Ms. Nikki Jones.
It's my pleasure to introduce Joe Copley, who's our principal at Kent Education Center bout line. This is a very special place where we bring in students from all over Kent County. It is a center program. We have over 130 students that have emotional impairments, and they get excellent, excellent quality education at this site. It's my pleasure, Joe Copley.
And lastly, we have University Prep Academy, Mr. Daniel Williams, head principal. And this Kenyatta Hill assistant principal. I'm going to ask the high school team, please stand up one more time, the high school division, everybody.
All right, all right.
Thank you.
Ron, on the list that we have, we have Southeast Career Pathways on here. I didn't know if they weren't here, and that's why you didn't announce them.
Mr. Huff is off today.
Okay.
Personal business, and Mr. Bryant will be returning to work on Wednesday.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I thought I wanted to say this.
And a suit. And a suit. I noticed the suit tonight, so.
He's up different than the crosswalks on the other side.
We are not the other side. We work together.
Good talking, Ron. Absolutely.
And one thing you'll notice, you'll notice a lot of master teachers are out there who've been promoted to the administrative ranks, so thank you so much.
Thank you. Good job.
I would like to add, Dennis, I do like your suit and tie as well. Looks nice on you. Blue is my favorite color, it looks really good.
I'm sorry, Dennis, I didn't know they were going to do this to you. There's no way I can stop it. Okay, so, next we have action items. Policy 8025. I know that, and probably all of you have figured this out now, but in our package, the policy is written 8025 with an R after it, but it should just be 8025. It's not a regulation, it is a policy. So can I have a motion so that we can open it up for discussion?
I'll make a motion, too. I'll make a motion that we adopt for a first reading, since it's a first round.
Yes, ma'am.
Support.
Okay, we're open for discussion. Questions, comments?
And then how can this do about the policy 8025?
Thank you for the clarification. Yeah, more.
Mine is, yeah, sorry.
I'd love it. Any questions, comments?
I just point to clarification. I don't know if Mr. Gorman wanted to come down and give us a little background. I know he and his team put a lot of work into this, and we're very, very excited to have this attendance policy. And this attendance policy just realized to high school, we're actually going to be working on developing a middle school and elementary school policy as well.
Okay, great. Now, why don't you just stay there for the rest of the meeting, too?
Well, I had three things on my checklist. This is number three.
Right, this is number three, so you're going after this.
Okay, so, just in case. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak about the attendance policy. You know as well as I do that when Superintendent Neal went on her listening tour, she wanted to see action happen immediately. And one thing that was addressed on her listening tour was attendance, especially in these times of heightened accountability for teachers. We heard many teachers say, you know what, I will do my very best in the classroom to educate students every day, but they need to be in school.
Absolutely.
And what we've noticed over the years is that our attendance policy has not had a set number of days that students could miss. In researching similar policies across the state, we noticed two school districts that didn't have set numbers. One being the Grand Rapids Public Schools and another being Detroit Public Schools. But many of the schools in our region, many of our schools across the state, many comparable to ours, had set numbers. What we wanted to do when we worked together as a team is we said, okay, what we do not want to have is a policy, a proposed policy, that says when a student gets to this number, that's it. There's no way to pass. As a former building principal, the last thing I want is for students to be in school having no opportunity to be successful. So within this policy, we have 12 days in a semester. Semester is made up of 18 weeks, two marking periods. And if by chance a student goes over that 12, he or she may still be able to earn a grade, but when they take the final exam, they must be able to earn a 70% or above to receive the grade. Okay? So it's not a death sentence, so to speak, if a student misses 13 days. It does become much more difficult for a student to pass, but these are 12 times we're in a student-missed class. And when we break down the percentages, the new policy we have in place ensures that students are in class a little over 85% of the time. So is it optimal? No, I think we'd all want our students to be there every single day, but I do think it's a step in the right direction.
Ron, I have a question about, how are you guys planning to educate parents and students on such a drastic change?
Absolutely. So early at orientation, Superintendent Neal said, we need to let folks know that there are going to be some changes with the high school attendance policy this year. When this is adopted, we will have mass mailings, mass robocalls, we will put it on our television channel, we will do whatever we can to make sure that students know the rules. The last thing we want to do is set students up for failure. So what I see is, as soon as this is adopted, if it needs tweaks, we will absolutely get back together with our team, tweak where need be. After all of that happens, I see getting correspondence out, coming up with an action plan, and maybe again, you know, having all of the principals get in front of all of their high school students to make them aware that we mean business, that we want you in school.
Great. Any questions, any further questions or comments for Ron?
There is some recent legislation that just went into, I believe, that just went into play about attendance and welfare recipients, and I believe that number was 10, unexcused absences.
Sure.
Is there intention to have any correlation with this policy in that question?
Well, sure. When this was brought to our attention, we started working on it early in the summer. So we started working in June, right when the students left. So if we have to make some tweaks so that we're in line with legislation, we will absolutely do that. We don't want to send two different messages to students in our school district, and I will work very closely with Superintendent Neal to make sure that we do that. When we looked at the number 12, we saw many school districts around the region that had a similar number. Some, the first time through, I have to, you know, full transparency here, we had 15. And when we put 15 out, the pushback we received from teachers, administrators, cabinet members, we said, okay, this is probably too much. So I think that this is the first time out trying something like this, and we need to get it right. So let's make sure that when we finally adopt something comparable to this, that it's aligned with whatever legislation is out there and what's best for kids.
And then if I can just add, it's unexcused absences. The important piece here, though, we would like for parents to understand is whether a child is excused or unexcused.
That's right.
An absence is critical, right? And so we are not accepting all excuses. So only the district and district staff members can, in fact, agree for an excused absence.
Absolutely.
So we do want to send a strong message that even if you call in, it's still important that the information the students are going to miss.
Mr. O'Connor, and then Dr. Randalls.
Just for reference, I know we talked about the number in the policy committee quite a bit.
Absolutely.
And one of the things we came to is knowing full and well that this is our first attempt at this, and we just want to put something up. 12 seemed like an 85%, seemed, you know, 85% in the rest of your life is pretty well for most people. So we just wanted to make sure that, you know, knowing we can change this down the road, but we felt it very important to get something in place.
Yeah.
And then, you know, listen to feedback after it's in and know we have the flexibility to change it if necessary in one direction or another.
Great. Dr. Randalls?
So this would actually seem to be a little more stringent than what the law would be because we're, would that be correct thinking? It seems to me that if you, I realize 12, and you could have as a modifier, that 10 unexcused for sure would be a problem, but, I mean, this seems like it's a little more challenging because it's excused and unexcused, which I think is really important and good to send to the child.
If you look at most schools' attendance policies, they count both toward absences. The difference here, if the student is excused, student has, can make up all the work that he or she missed, right? If you're skipping school, not attending, there should be some consequences.
Anyone else, questions for Ron? Mr. Gorman, excuse me. Ms. Geetson?
My only concern is that to Superintendent Neal's point, that we're the final arbiter of whether it's an excused or unexcused, I don't know enough about the legislation to know what, you know, what their definition is. So I want to be, if you've got, if you're standing in the way of somebody either receiving or not receiving a way to support their family, I think we've got to be really strong and well-understood in what our definition is.
And consistent.
Consistent, absolutely.
Absolutely. We are meeting August, or, excuse me, October 8th with a truancy committee, and it is, we have members from DHS, Nancy, the director, as well as the chief of police, the prosecuting attorney, and Larry Johnson, and myself, and there's about four or five other people, Mel Atkins. So we will be meeting to discuss this and talk it through, but.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for Mr. Gorman?
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for the motion that's on the floor?
To comment.
Excuse me?
Audience comment?
Well, you could have, early on, but you'll have to wait until the end of the meeting for our open, what is it called, public comment section?
Public or private?
It's just a couple more agenda items. It's just a couple more agenda items. And we have cards. Paul will get you a card so that you can give feedback. Dr. Baker?
I'd just like to say, I think this is a really great, like, this policy, the, yeah, I think that to some extent, these are different issues with the DHS policy. I think that...
You know, that actually is asking the school district to do quite a bit to put, as you say, someone's ability to pay for their family. But this is an educational policy, and this is, you know, depending on that. And so I think that we need kids in the classroom. If a parent has eight times they need to pull their kid out for excused absences, then that means that they shouldn't be missing five unexcused times, to put it over the top. So I think that this is a really solid policy, and I'm glad that, I know that people have been asking us to do this for quite a long time, and so I'm really glad that we're doing that. So thanks for the work for the committee and Ron, et cetera.
Any other questions or comments? Ms. Geetzen?
I'd also like to thank you as a person that works in industry. I mean, attendance is important, mandatory, required, on time, being there. So this is a good habit to form as a young person is getting ready for the work world because you do have to come to work. So I actually think this is a great way of educating our children.
Dr. Faal?
I was going to leave my comments to the end, but everybody's making general comments. I just want to express how pleased I am that we have a superintendent that sees this as a priority, and we have a director of secondary schools that has also made it a priority, and a board that's focusing on it. But also, all of those, the broader attendance issues that we're addressing with the Kent Social Services Networks, where we want to remove impedingness to absences, and the support of athletics, and the support of arts, and everything that keeps kids in school. And I'm very grateful that we have a superintendent that's leading in that way.
Any other questions or comments?
Slade?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Faub?
Yes.
Geetzen, yes. Haskins?
Yes.
O'Connor?
Yes.
Randles?
Yes.
President Lanier?
Yes.
Motion carries 8-0.
So our next action item is policy 3200. Just noting a change in the title of this policy. It should be local, state, and federal funding proposals and applications, as opposed to just state and federal. So just want to make sure that we capture that change in title. I'll need a motion on the floor so we can open it for discussion.
Motion to approve policy 3200, local, state, and federal funding proposals and applications.
Support.
Great. Any discussion, excuse me, questions or comments?
John, could you summarize the policy first?
Yeah, absolutely. This policy's been put into place, or proposed to be put into place, to offer the Board of Education the opportunity to review grant applications. You know, at this current time, we have a policy that ensures that the board reviews any donations or monies which the board receives prior to their use. But we wanted to make sure we weren't putting the cart before the horse, in a sense, to know that we didn't, you know, we didn't apply for something, or the superintendent or the administration didn't apply for some funding stream, and then have been awarded that funding stream, and then have that funding stream be in conflict with the wishes or desires of the Board of Education. So in a sense, we're, we've set a fairly large dollar threshold of $100,000 on it, knowing that small grants happen all the time. But anything, we assume that anything over $100 could have the potential ramification of shifting the focus or the impact of the work that this board and the district as a whole does. So we just want to make sure we're following protocols. So we developed this policy in concert with the superintendent and the administration just to provide those layers of transparency and for the board.
We talked about that a little bit when we talked about the earlier policy. Any other questions or comments?
So this is only in regards to grants, so when...
And it's for non-formula-based grant applications, meaning Title I, Title II, any of the big grants that we do that are normal in the course of school operation, don't apply. This is for mostly one-time specialty-type.
Unique, yeah.
Unique situations. Just to make sure that we, you know, when someone offers you a whole bunch of money, it's always really hard to say no after you've been awarded a whole bunch of money. So this is just to make sure that we're not changing the direction of something without first knowing that we're going to be trying to give ourselves this opportunity.
Over $100,000.
Over $100,000.
Any other questions or comments? Great. Can you call Gorman?
Slade?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Faub?
Yes.
Geetzen, yes. Haskins?
Yes.
O'Connor?
Yes.
Randles?
Yes.
President Lanier?
Yes.
Motion carries 8-0.
I have a consent agenda grouping. I need a motion.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Support.
Reverend Haskins?
Reverend Haskins.
Thank you. Slade?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Faub?
Yes.
Geetzen, yes. Haskins?
Yes.
O'Connor?
Yes.
Randles?
Yes.
President Lanier?
Yes.
Motion carries 8-0.
Next, we have a discussion item regarding the IB Arts program. Both committees last week had some discussion regarding the IB Arts program, and we wanted to, there was a recommendation from the Academic Achievement Committee to bring that here for further discussion.
Yes.
Can I turn the floor over to you, then, Ms. Slade, to kind of open up?
Certainly. We received a lot of information at our Student Achievement Committee meeting last Monday. As you can see, a very extensive one, put together by our district staff with support from the arts community and Grand Valley State University, et cetera. So we had a good, almost two hours' discussion on it. And at that point, having gone through it, we realized the cost is huge, but it's such a, really, a good idea. It's a way of combining IB program and arts, I mean, dealing with our art community, and it would be an IB program that would not have a test in, which I was pleased to see that we would be offering if this goes through, and this is all a plan at this point, that it's not a true go. So that's what we need to discuss. But I'm real pleased with a lot of the points of it, and so I'd like to hear the discussion on, from other people. Dr. Baker was at that meeting, as was Pastor Haskins, and Dr. Randles. Nearly said Ross. That would've been great. So we had a really good discussion, and I would like to hear the discussion because we really want to talk about having this group go forward to seek funding. We certainly do not have the funds at this point. One other statement that I think we need to talk about is the superintendent and staff are going through a whole planning for the whole district. So we don't want to say, this is what we want to do, because in order to do one, you've got to look at the entire district. So with that caveat, if anyone has any comments?
I do have a quick question about whether those of us who were not in attendance, if we could get that printed version of the report as opposed to reviewing it online. It's just so much.
Oh, sure.
So if we can get that, yeah, that.
Feasibility, feasibility study. There's a lot more. To the board members.
Did finance get that?
Yes.
You guys, so really, you're the only one that didn't get it.
We like to keep the president in the dirt.
Just need one. Sounds good. Thank you, Monica, for the clarification.
I decided not to point that out here.
And that looks pretty attractive. I want that.
No, we all got it.
Thank you for that.
And then perhaps we're going to have to have all of you have time to review all this. It's a lot of information.
No, the Finance Committee got it.
Yes, it just missed.
Isn't he just the president?
Yeah.
Well, that's a shame.
It was online. I just didn't have it printed, which, you know, I kind of prefer.
Sorry, I'm really, I'm sorry. I mean, really needed it.
I want, no.
You want mine.
No, I'm just...
You can have mine. I have another one at home.
No, I'm fine. Thank you. Any questions, or, Dr. Faal?
Having sort of peeked in and on and off of the task force and being very familiar with the work, I think, I'm very excited about the potential of this program and how innovative it is in that it's combining a proven rigorous curriculum with an arts education with the full intent of addressing the achievement gap. So I think that has real merit, and I think it'd be very exciting for us to lead in that area. I think it could garner national attention and perhaps international attention. I think the idea merits great consideration. It seems to me that the obstacle, the major, there's many small obstacles that you may have discussed in the, I mean, small and not-so-small, contractual issues and, you know, facility issues, curriculum issues, those. But, you know, those are good issues to solve and struggle with. I see the greatest barrier being some of the financial issues, and those are separated by the capital investment with what the building would cost and sustainability costs. So at Finance Committee, there really was a recommendation to do a more formal feasibility look at the range of costs and what that might look like in the community. So I think that's the next steps. But time is of the essence, but if we endeavor to do this, we want to do it well and know what we're getting into. But it's very exciting, especially the unique partnership. We have broad support from the arts community, support from an academic institution that wants to do a lab school, and, you know, a great public school that already has IB arts in it.
President Lanier?
Yes.
I do have, for discussion, and perhaps you know the answer to this more than I do, we have, a component of this is a Grand Valley State University lab school, which would be wonderful for us. What kind of a commitment do you know if we have from Grand Valley? Do we have anything other than, I mean, is it reaching any layers? Is it intended to go there? Because that's a big piece that would provide students their practicum and experience.
I can't answer that. Formally, I don't know what the commitment is. I know they want to do a lab school, not at Grand Valley, but there. So, you know, they would have tutorial support in the after-school program that would be specifically geared towards that program. You know, they would have student teaching and, you know...
But do we have a, do we have that as part of a, this is something we'd love to do? Or kind of where we are with everything here? Or do we have some kind of a commitment from that board or from leadership at Grand Valley?
Good question. Whether there is a formal commitment and there is to...
I'm sorry to interrupt with Dr. Randles. Did you have a response to that?
I think Mr. Holman Camp had talked about it a little bit at our education meeting, that the dean of school, dean of the College of Education, or however GVSU is structured, has been sitting in on many of the discussions in regard to GVSU involvement, and they didn't have a formalized plan, but that there was a strong level of commitment was sort of the way he put it. So it was more of this feasibility phase, and they don't have a...
They don't have a firm commitment from them.
Madam Superintendent, you have any insight on any of the funding and if, whether there's a commitment?
I haven't seen anything.
No, I don't. Okay.
Well, they did say also, there has not been a formal ask intentionally yet.
But Grand Valley is a partner in the whole planning, so...
Right. But I'm just saying, the financial piece, there hasn't been that formal ask yet.
Well, I'm not asking about the financial piece.
No, she mentioned it, so that's why I said that.
But it's, we're not at, we're now at an ask point. I don't know if this board says, yes, let's go forward and seek funding. I'd want to know if Grand Valley's going to do, yes, we're going to go forward with this, or if it's, yes, we're talking about it, and we like it, and it's a nice idea.
Right. Because my assumption would be that their level of commitment would also have some financial ramifications, too.
Absolutely.
That's, what was that?
Said Ms. Evans might know.
Oh, is she here?
Carol?
Carol.
Ms. Evans, I hate to bring you all the way down here. If you could just quickly answer, do you know anything about the financial commitment or the commitment that Grand Valley has?
We don't have MOUs from anyone yet.
Okay.
They have been at the table at our meetings and have been helping us plan, and they have been a part of the proposal that you have in front of you. We met today, and our next step is to the superintendent and others to kind of come up with our next steps in terms of how we begin to engage potential partners and on and off.
Okay. Does that answer your question, Ms. Slade?
It sounds like they're at the same level we are.
Yeah.
Yes, and, you know, we didn't seek anything in writing at this point.
Sure.
We wanted to develop the concept first.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Ms. Geetzen?
I get, I'm very excited about a new program. My concern is that we have other programs in this district that we have to make a very, we have to make a long-term commitment to supporting with additional professional development that's unique to a specific program like City High. There is a requirement for additional PD for our teachers that teach in IB. They have different requirements for professional development. So we need to know that there's a funding source for that additional PD, or a redirection of PD dollars for those teachers specifically. There's additional operating costs associated with special programs. We have other special programs in the district that require additional operating costs. The concern that I have is that the financials we saw are never breakeven. So it is in perpetuity designed to have a funding source. So we just have to know that when we go in, that we have a solid, long-term commitment, because we're making a commitment to these children, starting in elementary school, starting in pre-K, and they're going to want to graduate from this school, okay? So they're three when they start, they're 18 when they stop. That's the long game. We can't look at this and say, this is wonderful, because we need to commit to these children for the long game. And that's what I worry about, because I've seen other programs that we've gotten really excited about, but we weren't committed in a real way to the long game. So...
Any other questions or comments? Dr. Baker?
Yeah, I think that, I'd like to make a couple comments. First of all, I'm very impressed with the collaboration that's occurred, and the collaboration from the arts community, it's really nice to know that that many people in the arts community are backing Grand Rapids Public Schools and have a commitment to doing this in Grand Rapids Public Schools. Also, I think Superintendent Neal and Carolyn Evans' team has done a lot of work to prepare this, and board members as well have been a part of this for quite a while also, and I think it's very important they do this. I do think it's important, and correct me if I'm wrong, anyone, but this is not an arts school preparing future artists. This is an arts school, this is a school that's using the arts as a tool for doing academics. It's very important. I've already run into people in the community who see us as creating a performing arts school, and that's not what this is. This is a school that's about creating in our, you know, cadre of schools, that, you know, a different kind of school that will do different things as a strategy for helping all of our children succeed. And we have programs that are fantastic, and new programs that are fantastic are very important. I think that we need that for sustainability for the long run as well, which to some extent gets at Ms. Geetzen's concerns with the funding. I think that, again, I think that the Finance Committee asked for some clarification as to some other ways to do this. I got the impression from our discussion, and the reason that we, that the committee sent this forward is that our committee felt that this was, that we wanted to endorse the academic goals of this project and let this group, this coalition, know that we would back them if they created the appropriate set of funding sources to do that. And I think that that's why we wanted this full board discussion, was to make sure that the full board was behind, that if we could find a way to make this a viable, sustainable plan, that the board would support this. And so that's why we sent this forward, and I think it's a fantastic opportunity for the district to be sustainable in the future.
Dr. Randles?
I think Ms. Geetzen brings up an important point about how we haven't supported programs,
I think Ms. Geetson brings up an important point about how we haven't supported programs, sorry, previously thoroughly and that Ms. Neal understands the importance of committing to a program. She's already beefed up PD for, mon, sorry, PD for the IB program. And that we have to have a deep support for programming. And that's going to be such a big difference for any program that goes forward. So it's going to be a much more robust and well-supported program than just a little dive in and think it's a great program and then realize three months later that we don't have funding or support or union backing, that sort of thing. So really important.
Ms. Slade, I have a question. So you mentioned a little bit about that there are questions surrounding the funding and if it's sustainable, to kind of go back to Ms. Geetson's point. And then you also mentioned this being a part of the larger transformational plan that Superintendent Neal is putting together. So what is it that you're looking for the board to do tonight, your committee? You know, how do, how do we say to a group of people, this sounds like a really good idea, we have some concerns with the funding, but it also needs to fit in with the larger plan? Because, you know, you can't guarantee that it's going to happen without some of those things being addressed, but you also want to show the support so that they can move forward with what they need to do. Do you have any proposed plan for how we can do that?
Well, Dr. Baker did make a motion. It was supported by Reverend Hoskins or Dr. Randos. Keep stumbling on your name tonight, Monica. I'm not sure how to proceed with that formally, because our intent is to give our support for people who've worked really hard on this, and it's a great idea. And I, you know, I'm pleased with the idea that, as I said earlier, it's not a test in, it also includes special ed kids, which is important to me also. But how you, how you give that and say, you know, we've, you've got our support, go forward, but in order to do that, something else has to happen, because we're in the middle of dealing with a whole lot of changes and initiatives that we're going to have to do and transformational kind of things that we have to do. So in recognition of the, a great idea and a lot of work among a lot of people, I think we should show our support for that concept and have them seek funding, knowing that we're deeply interested in it, but that we need to deal with finances in the entire district. So it's not a, oh, it's a goal. It can't be a goal. We don't have that, if we could do that at this point.
Superintendent Neal, would you like to weigh in with some of that?
I would. I think if I have permission to allow the committee to seek funding up to $20,000 for a feasibility study, because I think that's about what it will cost to put together a nice feasibility study, to even see if this is something that we can, the dollar amount if we can raise it in the community. So I think that's probably the best, if, if I can make the agreement to purchase.
Now, forgive me for my ignorance, but I thought they just went through a feasibility study and this was the result of that. So help me to understand why this is different.
That was a feasibility.
Yeah.
Because it is, it's, can we raise the dollar amount in this community?
Okay, so two different questions. This was the question about, do you like the model? The next question is, can we raise?
Right. Can we, as a community, agree that this is our priority and can we raise the dollars? And so it really is to put people on the ground to see if this is something that the community will support.
Okay.
The price tag.
Okay. Dr. Randos, I saw your hand, and then Dr. Fall?
Oh, I think that was my point, was that this needed to, I think most, or Ms. Slade's initial thought in bringing this forward was to have sort of a secondary aspect of the feasibility study.
So it's been addressed already. Response.
Dr. Fall? I just want to reiterate what came out of the Finance Committee, and this was a conversation with Superintendent Neal, that, well, I think the committee, the task force, was looking for board support. They needed board support to do a more formal feasibility study. So the more formal feasibility study, we'll see if this is viable. But they can't begin the feasibility, that more formal feasibility study unless they can say, we've got board and district support behind it. So it's this chicken and the egg sort of thing.
Yeah, but it's, but that explanation is clear, because then now you kind of know what the motion should be in order to move forward, which has something to do with a feasibility study about funding. So, yeah.
Which is what I said a while back.
Do you want a motion?
I did.
Yeah. So any other questions or comments? Any other official questions or comments?
Are you asking for a motion to go forward to do a feasibility for finances? Is that?
Or do you feel like you have the support already?
Do you need a motion?
Yeah, I guess that is a good question, Dr. Baker.
Or do you want to go forward?
The board is asking, we've discussed it. I think that, I mean, that the, I mean, it's, it's a coalition already between community groups and the top academic staff and now the board, so.
The permission would come to spend up to $20,000.
And if that's the motion.
$18,000, I can do it. And we think it's about $15,000, but I would hate for them to get down the road and need to come back for $2,000. So I would ask permission for up to $20,000 to see if we can get this done. So it's just to give me permission to go over.
Okay, so you do need the motion because of the amount?
Yeah, I would like the amount.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we approve Superintendent Neal to, for 20, up to $20,000 to do a feasibility study on finances.
Regarding the IB.
Regarding the IB Arts program.
Julie, do you have that? I'm sorry, Tony, do you? Dr. Baker? Did you have that? Can you slow down just for a moment so we can make sure we're capturing it correctly?
You can ask me to.
Ms. Slade? I am sorry.
I make a proposal that we provide up to $20,000 to Superintendent Neal to go forward with a feasibility study on the IB Arts program, proposed IB Arts program. Is that flown in?
Looks like she has it, too.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Any further questions or comments? Thank you. When you're ready, Ms. Geetson, you can call the room.
Slade?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Faub?
Yes.
Geetson, yes. Hoskins?
Yes.
O'Connor?
Yes.
Randos?
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero.
I have four cards here for public comment. If there are any others, if you can just hold them up, someone will grab them from you and bring them to us. Tracy Lucas? Is Tracy Lucas here? Okay, great. I'll call the other names. Christine and Summer, you can come and sit at, in the front row here until it's your turn.
Excuse me.
Take your time, Ms. Lucas. Have you ever given public comment before?
No.
Okay, so I will give just a brief summary of what to expect for you and the others who have signed up this evening. Public comment is an opportunity for the Board of Education to hear from the public. So at the time when you're giving your comments, we'll just be in listening mode as opposed to response mode.
Okay.
You'll have three minutes to give those comments. And is this, that isn't working, is it? Okay, so we have.
I will give you a one-minute warning.
You'll have a one-minute warning. We have a timer here and it'll beep when your three minutes are up, but you'll have a one-minute warning before your three minutes. Okay? Start whenever you're ready.
Okay, I just wanted to comment on the school closure. I've been hearing a lot of information, and so I don't know what's true and what's not true. I come, I am the, the power person at Camp Hall Park Elementary, and that is what the parents are coming saying, it's, it's closing, it's closing. I said, well, I don't know. I don't know what to say, and I really don't know what to say. But I myself want to just mention that, you know, the closure of Camp Hall Park would be detrimental to me and a lot of the kids, too. I am not only the power person, but I'm also a volunteer. I work in the school lunch program, I'm working breakfast program, and that school is an intercity school, and I feel that the kids need an intercity school because they're intercity, intercity kids, and to move them all, you know, to all these other schools, to me, is really crazy. There are a lot of kids in that area that could utilize that school. But because they've heard that the school's closing, they didn't transfer them here and they put them there, but I think they actually would have come back to Camp Hall if that was something that they could have, but see, they're going by hearsay, not factual stuff. I'm here because I want facts, you know? What's going on? You know, and we don't know. Then on the news, it says, there's 15 schools are going to close, okay? But they don't mention which ones they are. So Camp Hall is like, you know, the parents like frantic, like, I don't know what to do. And it's like, I don't know what to tell you. Maybe go to a school board meeting, voice your opinion. It might help, you know? But, I mean, these are intercity kids, intercity kids. Right now, we don't have that many intercity schools. Alexander's gone, Seck's been gone, you know, a lot of them are gone. So then where are the kids? Gone. One little bit left. Sorry. But, no, that's really about all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I've done this before. I'm a teacher at School of Health Science, and I'm a math and science person. But nonetheless, I'm glad to hear all the comments about how important the arts are in school and how they, arts keep, help keep kids in school. And I'm glad you're talking about the addition of arts to academics, because I've been sent here by my students. First of all, they're very grateful, as I was just explaining to Mr. Gorman, we haven't heard his name for half an hour, so I thought I'd mention it. He's kindly allowing, he's kindly allowing us to go to, to go down to Art Prize tomorrow, and it's going to be a nice day, so it'd be lovely. But my students want to know, why don't they have art in our school? For their art credit, they, they have anatomy and physiology or technical writing, not even creative writing, but technical writing. And their complaint to me, as the math teacher, is, this is as bad as geometry. Geometry has more art in it than those. And apparently that wasn't enough. So as you're considering the, the plans for the, for the district and what you're going to put in different schools, my students, who are way more artistic than me, would greatly appreciate it if they could have art back in their high school. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My motion is for the motion to audit on non-responsive 941 documents, 940 documents, 668 documents, 6632 documents, 6631 for federal government, state government, city government, and county government.
Repeat your question. I'm not sure that I'm quite understanding. I don't know if you understand. So if you could help us to understand what you're asking for?
I am looking for an audit for 10 years.
Okay. So you want to do like a FOIA request for information from the district?
Convenient.
I'm sorry?
Whatever's convenient.
Okay. Mr. Johnson, can you have a conversation with her to see, as the FOIA officer, to make sure we're understanding what the request is?
There is basically three topics.
Okay.
Grading, housing, auto, and entities itself.
Mr. Johnson will follow. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Good evening.
Good evening. Well, my first question is, earlier you were talking about board support. So I wanted to know, as a parent, what about support to parents that advocate for their children? And the board as a whole should also be supportive with parents who advocate, advocate for their children, but instead they're upholding lies. And two, I wanted to know that Dennis said that there are consequences for children missing school. I would like to know, what are the consequences for staff that misses important meetings that were scheduled to be with parents? What are the consequences for the staff members?
Okay.
And then two, everyone was making comments on how the board is so for the children, it's commercials, you know, radio commercials about how everyone is for the children. And I just don't understand how that is so when everyone is not even on the same page working for the board. Then two, I wanted to know the process of revokes when it comes to your students. I would like to know the process of that. And I also wanted to know when a revoke is done. I know that there's a booklet or a binder where all the letters are kept. I wanted to know the dates and when those are supposed to be either mailed out or placed in a binder. I was informed before that it was the first week of June. I wanted to know if that was true. Let me think. Oh, and two, I wanted to also inform or ask a question. When you schedule meetings either with Ms. Neal or anyone else here at the Board of Education, I want to know, how can you get your point across or be heard as a parent and say that you for the children when you deny meetings to meet with the parent? So how can you actually say and put out that the children come first, we want to make sure they get the best education, they become successful, but you deny meetings with the parent? So how can you ensure that they're first, but you don't want to meet with the parent? And I just feel as, with certain positions that everyone hold here at the board, they should set the example. And if you're denying meetings and telling it to your secretary to get, to give that information to the parent, then how can you set an example and expect for your staff to do what you're not doing? And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Ms. Neal, can you have, I have these cards, and I'll give these to you, so your team can follow up with the inquiries that were requested this evening. And Superintendent, let me ask, were there any other public comment? Superintendent Neal, your comments, please?
No comments.
Dr. Baker?
No comment, thanks.
Dr. Fall?
No comment.
Reverend Hoskins?
Two comments. Mr. Dennis Branson, he still back there? Dennis? Is he sleeping?
You should have laughed, Dennis.
He's resting. He is a fraternity brother of mine, so Dennis, I support you and I appreciate, go mob. I appreciate your former attire and I appreciate your current attire.
That's right.
That's from signal to signal. And the other comment is, I just want to know where my tag is. There's about three of them misplaced somewhere, and I like those facing me when I'm making a vote. Mine, John's, Renard's, yeah, there's a couple of them missing, so.
Julie, you hear that question? Okay, great.
You guys are laughing, I am just serious, but I'm smiling as I'm, can you be serious and smile?
I wasn't even smiling.
That's why it's so hot.
Oh, okay, I was thinking, huh?
I am serious. I want that back in front of me.
Okay, absolutely. I'll give up mine until you get one. Mr. O'Connor? Dr. Randos or Dr. Ross, as you've been calling all evening?
Oh, yeah, right. Yes, and sorry.
Mrs. Geetson.
Mrs. Geetson, it's like Mrs. Randall. It's my mother you're referring to.
Monica, that first time locked there.
No, I was sharing it with John all night. I just moved it back.
Ms. Slade?
I have no comment.
Ms. Geetson?
Jeez, I was going to have some comment.
But now you're not.
Congratulations, Mr. Branson, just because everybody else has been harassing you.
And the rest of you who are new to you.
Congratulations to all of our administrative team, that you guys have really hard jobs. And I really want to thank you for the work you do each and every day. I interact with a few of you pers, up close and personal with my own children, and I know I'm not like the easiest person in the world, so I can't imagine me times what, I don't know, or more, because I think children have multiple parents sometimes.
Right, absolutely, that's right.
Bless you, is what I say. Thanks for all the work you do. And also thanks for all the work on the attendance policy, because I, I do believe that attendance is really crucial. Who was it that said, the key to life is showing up?
Woody Allen.
Woody Allen, you know, I don't like to quote Woody Allen, but sometimes just showing up is pretty important to hear.
Why do you know that? It's the other question. It's the other question.
Study Woody Allen. So thanks for all your work. And I think school's going swimmingly.
Awesome.
At least for your kids.
Well, I'd just like to say thank you to the building administrators for joining us this evening, and we'll have part two.
You will.
At the next board meeting with the elementary schools.
That is correct.
And even your cabinet, if we can.
That is correct.
Have your leadership team to join us, too, so that we can put the names and faces together and.
Absolutely.
And then also the follow-up and think, I want to thank the people who did give public comment, especially those who, Louise, I want to thank you, too, but those who don't normally give public comment is such a challenging thing to navigate, and I just want to say thank you for being willing to come forward and ask those tough questions. And we definitely will have someone getting back with each of you who had questions to